Good afternoon. We will be calling the board meeting to order in a moment. Could we please hold comments while SPS TV takes us live? After a five-minute pause, I will call us to order. This is Director Hampson. I am now calling the February 10th, 2021 regular board meeting to order at 3:31 PM. This meeting is being recorded. We would like to acknowledge that we are on the ancestral lands and traditional territories of the Puget Sound Coast Salish people. Ms. Wilson Jones, the roll call, please.
Director DeWolff.
Present.
Director Harris.
She may be with us a few minutes late.
Okay. Director Hershey. Director Hershey.
Oh, sorry. And he also may be a few minutes late.
Director Rankin.
I'm here.
Director Rivera Smith.
Present.
And Director Hampson.
Here. Superintendent Juno is also joining us for today's meeting. And additional staff will be briefing the board as we move through the agenda. As we begin this meeting, I would also like to welcome Kira Blumhagen, who is joining us as the student representative from Ingram High School and Seattle Skills Center today. We will be hearing from Kira later in the meeting. This meeting is being held remotely per the governor's proclamation prohibiting meetings such as this one from being held in person. The public is being provided remote access today by phone and through SPS TV by broadcast and streaming on YouTube. To facilitate this meeting, I will ask all participants to ensure you are muted when you are not speaking. Staff may be meeting participants to address feedback and ensure we can hear directors and staff. I will now turn it over to Superintendent Juno for her comments.
Thank you, President Hampson, and good afternoon, directors. I'll just share a quick update on our in-person reopening planning so far. Dr. Cloverca, Dr. Pedrosa, and Chief Bergy continue to negotiate the working conditions with our labor partners, the Seattle Education Association. At this time, the current MOU that was negotiated back in August 2020 is still in effect and will remain in that way until, of course, until there's a new MOU. I just want to thank everyone who is at the table working toward an agreement. It's really hard work, and I appreciate all of those efforts. Chief Jesse and the Health Service team continue work to keep the safety protocols for staff and students up to date with the most recent information from the Department of Health. Currently, we have childcare in 50 of our schools, and as you know, that has been ongoing for a while. And students receiving individual instruction per their individual education plans are in school in 46 of our schools. There have been 102 confirmed COVID-19 cases of SPS staff, students, and volunteers, but we have not seen any widespread transmission of COVID-19 in our schools. These isolated cases of infection merely reflect what we would expect, given the high level of community transmission. And this low rate really is because of the amazing work of our health team and the strong protocols that they've been able to put in place. Dr. Scarlett and her curriculum assessment and instruction staff continue to work with school leaders to ensure our students receive the high-quality education called for in Seattle Excellence. This team is creating schedules for students and staff once we return to in-person instruction for pre-K through first grade. And so just want to thank that team as well for their focus on the work and the strategic plan. Dr. Pedrosa and the special education staff continue to support students and staff, and they are super committed to serving students in the intensive pathway models in person very soon. Dr. Pedrosa and the athletic staff are also working to lift high school sports later this month. We know that physical activity and social time is so important to the mental well-being of our students, and we're hopeful also to have some middle school sports start in March. And I've also heard whispers that Unified Sports are also visiting about maybe coming back. All athletics will follow the safety protocols to mitigate and manage the spread of the virus. Chief Bush is keeping childcare providers are, you know, they are all the heroes that immediately jumped into action to support essential workers and other families last spring and other community partners up to date about our return to in-person instruction. Chief Podesta, the capital planning and facilities teams are in schools right now, ensuring that necessary signage is in place, that desks are set up appropriately, that air is circulating properly, and that our buildings are ready to welcome staff and students back into classrooms. You can keep up to date on all of this work thanks to Chief Campbell and her communication team. Our website has the latest updates on our planning. And if you have not yet done so, please check it out. There is a lot of information there. I'm just really thankful for the work of teams across the district. I'm excited for more students to receive in-person instruction from our educators. I know that for most students, in-person instruction is the most powerful method for them to learn and for staff to teach. Just a couple of other things that I want to share today. During winter months, we know that utility outages occur, and we recently suffered one of those when all the electricity went down in different pockets in the city. And that really does interfere with remote learning. Occasionally, we may have unexpected technology outages and network interruptions as well. So we have prepared an outage plan to inform school communities how electricity, network, and learning platform interruptions will be managed. The criteria for shifting the instructional model to asynchronous or offline learning can be found online. A synchronous learning will count as a school day. Central Office has provided independent learning activities to support students during an emergency response. So I encourage everyone to access these resources, the independent activities, when power resumes or to print in advance for an emergency event. Students are always encouraged to read and to complete uncompleted school assignments. And individual schools may also provide guidance on activities or resources for families to use. And so all that information can also be found on our website. We've hired an ethnic studies program manager who will start next week. We'll send a photo and a few biography lines in this week's, in next week's Friday memo. The ethnic studies curriculum specialist positions are posted, and the Black Studies Program Manager position is also posted, and that will close early next week. So you can get that out to your networks. The Black Studies course that we have started last week, we have 52 students enrolled. The teacher is Mr. Alexander Ray, who has also been hired as the Black Studies Curriculum Specialist. We're also excited to be in partnership with local scholars and educators through the Afkana Institute, Delbert Richardson's Unspoken Truths, Dr. Latasha Levy, Professor of Afkana Studies at U-Dub, Jessie Hagopian, author, activist, and longtime SPS educators, and Noni Irvin, community leader. And so there's just a lot going on, as you all know. And so just with that, I'll end, President Hampson, and thank you, directors.
Thank you. Again, I would like to welcome Seattle Skills Center student Kira Blumhagen. Kira is a senior at Ingram High School and Seattle Skills Center. She is passionate about inclusion and diversity in the trades. I will turn it over to you now, Kira, for your comments.
Thank you, Director Hampson, for that introduction. I've always loved working with my hands, whether it's sewing my own clothing or laying up carbon fiber for a supersonic rocket. Unfortunately, very few of the classes that SPS offers are hands-on. The exception is Skill Center, which gives the students the opportunity to develop valuable job skills and take a break from the traditional classroom. The Skill Center runs classes in everything from firefighting to carpentry. While I would love to live in a world where college is accessible to every student, we don't. And even if we did, there are many students whose potential doesn't shine in the classroom. The Skill Center gives these students an opportunity to explore career options, explore other career options that are integral to our society. Without people working in the trades, it's impossible to get a car fixed or a house built. Unfortunately, these trades struggle to find an incoming workforce, do largely to schools' focus on sending students to college. I didn't have anyone in school mention that we could pursue electrical work or carpentry as a career until I came to the Skill Center. Contrary to popular belief, work in the trades is living wage work that can pay well more than jobs requiring a college degree and even jobs in engineering or other white-collar fields. In addition, the training and education period is all paid as an apprenticeship or another entry-level position, as opposed to sending students into debt with college. While the Skill Center isn't paying students monetarily, it is providing an essential service, both in training the students and to the community. In the construction class, when we can be in the classroom, we build tiny houses for the Low Income Housing Institute to house homeless folks. The Seattle Times declared Lehigh's tiny house villages to be the most effective immediate solution to the homelessness crisis. The Skill Center service to students and the community is provided free of charge, meaning that it can make the most difference to the most disadvantaged students. One of the things that makes Skill Center so accessible is that the administration is set up to help every student succeed, including free and timely transportation to and from their home school. I know this board is focused on equity, and supporting the Skill Center and alternative education programs like it is an important way to help ensure that all students can be successful in career and life. For those watching at home, the application for next year is open now, and I would strongly encourage every student to consider the opportunity it provides, whether or not you intend to pursue college in the future. Thank you for the time to speak today.
Thank you so much, Ms. Blumhagen. We've now reached the consent portion of today's agenda. May I have a motion for the consent agenda?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second. I'll second. Okay. This motion has been moved by Director Rivera Smith and seconded by Director Rankin. Do any directors have any items they would like to remove from the consent agenda? See none? All those in favor of the consent agenda signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Those opposed? The consent agenda has passed unanimously. We have now reached the public testimony portion of the agenda. And I'm just, because we only have two minutes prior to the public testimony portion, I'm going to slowly move us into that, unless any committee chairs have a very short briefing they'd like to give.
Director Hampson, is this a good time for committee reports?
Sure, if you'd like to make a brief committee report, we have time for one.
Yep, very brief. So last week, let me just make sure my notes correct here. Last week, we had our February Operations Committee meeting. Thank you to Directors Rivera Smith and Director Rankin, who are also part of the committee. It was a fairly packed agenda, and we will be moving forward about seven board action reports that directors will see on their February 24th regular board meeting agenda. And I'll just share some of those high-level updates about what bars we will be seeing after a midweekend break at our next regular board meeting. One bar, which we actually talked about today, is a focus on West Seattle Roof. We need to do some fix there. We're also presenting a bar to rename the Southwest Athletic Complex to Minokanto Southwest Athletic Complex. Also, very exciting, I know folks will remember last year, the directors unanimously approved the resolution affirming our commitment to our LGBT+ students, staff, and community. One of the pieces of that legislation was a directive to name a school in honor of an LGBTQ figure, national or local. And we have a family support worker reach out to us from Northgate Elementary to begin the process independently. And so Northgate Elementary is in the process of renaming their elementary school to James Baldwin Academy, which is a huge deal. He's a famous black queer literary and cultural hero. And we also will be talking about the Cleveland Forest, which we've had as part of our ownership, Seattle Public Schools, from the Cleveland High School Alumni Association back from World War II. There's a forest that we have, and King County Conservation is working with us to hold that land for conservation purposes for perpetuity. And we'll see those all at our next meeting, and that's all I have. Thanks, Director Hampson.
Okay, thank you for that report on the Operations Committee, Director DeWolff, our chairperson. We will next go to public testimony. We will be taking public testimony today by teleconference, as stated on the agenda. For any speakers watching through SPS TV, please call in now to ensure you are on the phone line when your name is called. Board Procedure 1430 BP provides the rules for testimony, and I ask that speakers are respectful of these rules. I will summarize some important parts of this procedure. First, testimony will be taken today from those individuals called from our public testimony list and, if applicable, the waiting list, which are included on today's agenda posting on the school board website. Only those who are called by name should unmute their phones, and only one person should speak at a time. Speakers from the list may cede their time to another person when this listed speaker's name is called. The total amount of time allowed will not exceed two minutes for the combined number of speakers, and time will not be restarted after the new speaker begins. In order to maximize opportunities for others to address the board, each speaker is allowed only one speaking slot per minute. If a speaker cedes time to a later speaker on the testimony list or waiting list, the person to whom the time was ceded will not be called to provide testimony again later in the meeting, as there is only one speaking slot per person. Those who do not wish to have time ceded to them may decline and retain their place on the testimony or waitlist. Finally, the majority of the speaker's time should be spent on the topic they have indicated they wish to speak about. Ms. Wilson Jones will read off the testimony speakers.
Thank you, President Hampson. A quick logistical note, speakers, please remain muted until your name is called to provide testimony. When your name is called, please be sure you have unmuted on the device you are calling from, so unmute on your phone, and also press *6 to unmute yourself on the conference call line. Each speaker will have a two-minute speaking time, and a chime will sound when your time is exhausted, and the next speaker will then be called. The first speaker on today's testimony list is Kiyasha Rogers. Kiyasha Rogers.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can.
Okay. I think that you guys changing the school so there is no longer fossil fuels used is a great idea. It would also probably cause other businesses and other people to use less fossil fuels in their businesses. And also, if you guys are going to end up doing this, I have a suggestion, and that is maybe you guys could include like a class about like global warming in like science, because a lot of kids and some adults don't believe in climate change or global warming, and that is a big problem. If they don't believe in it, then they won't grow up to believe in it. But if they do, then they will end up growing up to believe in it. And if we thought back on all these things, it will be less of a problem, and we won't have to worry about the ice melting in Antarctica and everything being underwater, because scientific shows, science shows that if that ice melts, the water level will be twice as high as the Statue of Liberty. And because of that, nobody would have anywhere to live, because they'd just all be homeless, because their houses would be underwater. And I don't think anybody wants that to happen, but some people don't believe in climate change, so they don't believe that this will actually happen. But if they do, maybe they'll stop using fossil fuels in their businesses. The smallest thing can have a giant impact. Thank you. That is all I have.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Next is Joseph Sawaya. Joseph Sawaya.
First, I just want to give a brief shout-out to the Billy Frank Jr. Day. Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
First, I just want to give a brief shout-out to the Billy Frank Jr. Day, which is going to be considered on the 24th, great Snookali Tribe activist, treaty rights activist. Now, I'd like to play in favor of the Clean Schools Resolution. Testimony by one of our students, and then I'll end with a short song. Here's the testimony.
Good afternoon. I'm Mrs. Roberson, and I am here in support of the 100% Climate Change Resolution as a NYC member and a community member. I implore that all members of the school board stand firmly behind this resolution, or it will benefit us all to think of other energy sources that won't ruin our climate even more. With the influence from the school board, we could gather various departments, community members, or anyone really, to rule this resolution along faster in this year of 2021. It starts with the school. I am a fierce advocate for improving the education, and I believe improving the climate will reflect positively on our academic performances. Once we implement a necessity of change in reducing our carbon footprint, I truly believe that not only the youth in our community would want to offer to help, it'll be cities and states, and then eventually the world. The creation of this resolution has been centered on the engagement and collaboration of this community, and you, the board, are a part of this community. We need you to be working alongside us. Healthy air equals a healthy mind. Thank you. Good afternoon. I'm Mrs. Roberson, and I am here in support of the-
Sorry, okay, here's the song. We want all clean and green schools. Don't want high-carbon, mean schools. Get rid of fossil fuels for all our kids. You know we need some climate justice. Can't lie, no dirty muzzies. Our planet can't go on no more like this. You know that on the natural gas, it show of fossil fuels. They're trying to rewash us and play us for food, but we can't have it in our schools. We want all clean and green schools. Don't want high-carbon, mean schools. Get rid of fossil fuels for all our kids by 2040. Or earlier, if we can, and I know that we can. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Wilson Jones, next speaker, please.
Next is Matt Remley. Matt Remley.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can.
Hello? Okay. Hi, my name is- Hello?
Sorry, you're good. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. My name is Matt Remley. I'm a resident of Beacon Hill and a parent of students in middle school and high school. And likewise, I also want to support the Billy Frank Jr. Propose Day. And I'm calling in support for the Clean Energy Resolution. And I think it is an outstanding step for the Seattle Public Schools to be taking, to be a leader in joining alongside the city of Seattle in wanting to phase out fossil fuels. This is also a step towards equity in that our students in the South End, from Beacon Hill, South Park, and Georgetown, disproportionately suffer the health impacts from pollution due to the burning of fossil fuels, which we know impacts both health and abilities within schools. So it's also an equity issue. I'd like to thank board members DeWolff and Rivera Smith for their leadership and support and guidance on this, and look forward to celebrating the Seattle Public Schools becoming the first school district in the state to pledge to go fossil fuel-free. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
The next speaker is Jessica Levine. Jessica Levine. Jessica Levine.
Hello, this is Jessica Levine. I'm a rep calling in today to support the school board resolution on climate change and in support of 100% clean schools. I am a teacher in Seattle Public Schools and daily bike commuter and science teacher in the district for the last 15 years. And for more than 20 years, I have been educating students about climate impacts and the action they can take. And before I continue, can I just have confirmation I'm being heard?
You are.
Thank you. Great. And it is time in this resolution for the district to seize a unique opportunity in the global pandemic to make significant changes to their own climate actions. My lessons of climate science and actions for students speak loudly when I hear students like those who spoke today. I followed their lead and took a personal day to march with students over a year ago in the youth climate strike that was global. And this is no longer personal. This must be a community action, and Seattle as a city and as a leader in climate action can do so with the district's focus currently at this time with equity. It is high time that the intersectionality of climate justice and environmental justice not only get on the curriculum but become part of the operation. For more than 30 years, as Greta has told us, and I have studied, the science is crystal clear. Seattle schools needs to step up their leadership into the 21st century. We must listen to our youth. Please act now for a climate future. Please support the 100% Clean Schools Initiative and Resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Brian Terry. Brian Terry.
Hi, this is Brian. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
In our schools today, a white student is six times more likely than a black student to be identified as highly capable. District staff told me that although we know who our highly capable black students are, we choose not to identify them, because we believe that due to their circumstances, they will not keep up with their white peers and will slow the class down. This is the same argument used in Brown versus the Board of Education to defend racial segregation. It's time for us to move on. It's time for us to believe in our black students, believe that they are capable and deserve equal access to advanced learning, and believe the studies that show that academically, integrated classrooms provide dramatic benefits to black students with no judgment to white students, and believe that as our world grows smaller and our community more diverse, integrated classrooms will benefit all students by providing the opportunity for them to learn the critical skills of how to work with and make friends with people from different backgrounds. Please believe in our black students and insist on equitable, highly-capable identification. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Ruth Sawyer. Ruth Sawyer. Ruth Sawyer.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can.
Great. Hi, everyone. My name is Ruth Sawyer. I'm an organizer with the Sierra Club. I really appreciate the chance to speak with you all today in support of the Clean Energy Resolution. And I also, before I talk about that one- want to express my support for the district adopting a Billy Frank Jr. Day and also for the demands put forth by the NAACP Youth Council and Black Lives Matter at school. I am speaking today to ask you to pass the Clean Energy Resolution, which will eliminate all fossil fuels used in heating, cooling, cooking, and transportation by 2040. The science is clear. We have 10 to 12 years to reduce harmful greenhouse gases from the burning of fossil fuels before the impacts of climate change become catastrophic. That's why a lot of school districts across the country, including recently Oakland, Salt Lake City, Los Angeles, and many more, are committing to move to 100% clean energy to phase out gas infrastructure and adopt zero emissions school buses. By embracing clean electricity and transportation, these proposals put the district on a path to eliminate climate pollution from our operations and improve student health very concretely and academic performance. I want to take a second to emphasize the process that we used to develop this resolution and the many community members and leaders who have given input into the resolution that you have before you. More than 25 organizations have endorsed the resolution at this point, and we've gotten input of many more at various stages in the process. I know all of you on the board have a list of supporters in the materials, and you can also see from that how many people have been deeply involved in shaping the resolution. I also want to add the latest endorsements we've received that are not indicated in those materials. That's from Safe Action Climate Team, Protectors of the Salish Student, Sand Earth, Washington Environmental Council, King County Executive Dow Constantine, Fridays for Future Seattle, North Seattle College Student Leadership. And that was the end of the list. We urge you to protect our futures by passing this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Chris Jackins.
My name is Chris Jackins, Box 84063, Seattle 98124. On the West Seattle Elementary Walt Hundley Playfield Parcel Exchange. Six points. Number one, this action aims to try to fix a problem caused in 1987 when documents did not get properly filed for a property exchange, and the school was built on a portion of the parcel that is still owned by the City Parks Department. Number two, this 30-year-old problem was discovered in connection with current plans to build a new school addition. Number three, on January 6th, the district held an appeal hearing related to environmental review of the project. The district did not disclose the property swap problem. Number four, the next week, the district brought the issue to the board's operations committee. Number five, this means that the environmental review process was tainted. Number six, the board should not vote on this issue until the district redoes the environmental review process. Please vote no. On the North Gate Elementary Project, five points. Number one, the district proposes to take away the current large grass playfield and shrink play space by 50%. Number two, the playfield land was provided in 1958 by the Isbell family for $300, with the understanding that it would be kept as a park area. Number three, the district has not seemed motivated to address this issue. Number four, given the situation with the botched West Seattle Elementary Property Swap, it seems that the district may also lack the expertise to address this issue. Number five, please change the North Gate plans to preserve the playfield and instead update the existing school. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Richard Voget. Richard, if you're on the line, you may need to press star six to unmute. Moving to our next speaker, Sarah Egger Wyler. Sarah Egger or Egger Wyler? Oh, I'm sorry, is that Richard? Do we have Sarah or Richard on the line?
This is Sarah Egger Wyler. Can you-
Can you hear me now?
Um, I think I can hear both of you. Can we start with Richard, and then we'll move to you, Sarah? Apologies.
This is Sarah.
Sorry for the confusion.
Sarah, I'll call your name next. Thank you.
My name is Rich Voget, and I'm a parent of a student of the 80s and 90s. Here is a statement I have read online. COVID is a pop quiz. Climate change is a final exam. It seems appropriate to use terms like pop quiz and final exam when talking to the school board. With over 472,000 deaths, I think we can agree that the U.S. has failed the pop quiz. Climate change will bring much, much more death and economic devastation if it isn't addressed now. I am encouraged by statements from the new Biden administration that it would treat the climate crisis as emergency that it is and that every agency is now a part of our climate team. I am asking you to have the Seattle School District be a part of the nation's climate team. Therefore, I urge you to pass a Clean Energy Resolution that transitions the district off fossil fuels no later than 2040. One economic benefit to the resolution is that savings from onsite solar energy and conservation efforts can be redirected into classrooms and student learning. Our daughter Pamela attended Seattle Public Schools from kindergarten through eighth grade when she developed a brain tumor which caused her to walk with a limp, and some boys started making fun of her. She died a year after graduating from high school. I tell her story not to rag on Seattle Public Schools, but to remind you that the elderly and children are the ones who die in heat waves. And I don't wish that grief on any parent. Tens of thousands died from COVID because we failed the pop quiz and we didn't take bold action soon enough. I consider their deaths preventable. By passing the Clean Energy Resolution, you can help prevent needless death and suffering. Let's be sure we don't fail the climate. The final exam on climate change. Thank you.
Thank you. Next now is Sarah Egger Wyler.
Can you hear me?
We can, yes.
Am I heard right now? I'm sorry. I want to make sure I can, I'm heard.
Yes, we can hear you, Sarah.
Hi, I teach third grade in Seattle, and I live in North Gate. Before I go on, I want to also put my support behind a Billy Frank Jr. Day and all demands made by the NAACP Youth Council. In my time as a Seattle teacher, I have also taught first grade and fourth and fifth grade. When I ask my students what they care about, the number one thing they bring up is the environment. Students, especially ones furthest from educational justice, were born into a reality where they have no idea what their future on this planet will look like. Many of them are terrified, angry, and passionate about addressing pollution, litter, or even climate change. I've seen this in my classrooms by students, including the one that spoke earlier today. If we are truly, if we truly want to show all of our students that we care about providing an equitable future for them, we need to role model that by following up our statements of equity with actions, including actions of environmental justice, native justice, racial justice, et cetera. As I'm sure all the educators and parents here would agree, students learn by positive examples. And I can say from personal experience, my students do not appreciate when I teach them something that I may not be following myself. Let's show our students that we will lead by example in Seattle. I urge you to pass the resolution to transition Seattle Public Schools to 100% clean energy this year.
Thank you. Next is Robin Briggs.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, Robin.
Okay, great. Hi, I also wanted to support the Billy Frank Jr. Day and speak for the Clean Energy Resolution. The Clean Energy Resolution would continue the school's leadership position in sustainability. 100% Clean Energy seems like an almost insurmountable challenge at the start. I know that for me, as I began to educate myself on the details of how the school buses work, I thought, I don't know how we're going to do this. And as I learned more, I saw opportunities I hadn't guessed at the start, and people who are frankly eager to help find solutions. I also realized that there are going to be a lot of subsidiary benefits as well. Electric buses can be parked closer to their routes. Our buses today are driving up from the Duamish in the morning to start their routes all over the city and then deadheading back again in the afternoon. This adds to the pollution in the area that already gets more pollution than anywhere else. Moreover, inside the bus, it is worse. Pollution measured inside Seattle buses show two to four times more PM 2.5 particles inside the bus than out on the street. Being exposed to these particulates does not enhance children's learning or life expectancy. So we need to switch to electric buses for the climate, but we also need to do it for our health. And when we do this, the school will see big cost savings on operations. The fuel will cost much less, the maintenance is also much less, and because the buses won't be deadheading as much, there will be savings in mileage and labor and more predictable arrival times. Of course, there will need to be more funding to make this happen, and I believe the state is ready to help on this. There are a lot of moving parts that will need to come together, but I've been very encouraged by all the people I have met who are motivated to make this happen. We will reap big benefits from this. The kids growing up healthier and better positioned to learn in school, the goodwill the school will build for stepping up, and the good example it will set. We'll wonder why we didn't do this a long time ago. Thank you, everyone, for giving me time to speak.
Thank you. Next is Sarah Fenton.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can.
Great. So my name is Sarah Fenton. I'm a student at North Seattle College. Last year, I served as the student body president, and this year, I currently have the opportunity to mentor our ASC president, which happens to be a student at Nathan Hale High School. I share this because although I didn't receive my education through public, through Seattle Public Schools, I believe that SBS and Seattle Colleges share a community in significant ways. My first summer in Seattle, I was enrolled in a particularly difficult chemistry class. And about two weeks before my finals, as a result of increasing temperatures, wildfires around the state pushed an incredible amount of smoke into our area. As someone with asthma, being functional during those few, those last two weeks of my quarter was difficult, and it significantly impacted my performance in my class. I found my home in Seattle, and when I envision the next 20 years, I want to believe in a future in which my children can participate in learning and life being unburdened by extreme fear due to climate change, which as it stands now is an existential crisis. I'm speaking today to urge you to pass the Clean Energy Resolution. All of the student governing bodies at North Seattle College enthusiastically endorse this resolution. We believe it's one of the most consequential, compassionate, and strategic moves you can make on behalf of our shared community. We are currently looking at this resolution as a guiding light for pushing for similar resolutions at our institution. I urge Seattle Public Schools to vote yes on this resolution because it not only says something profound about who we are as a community right now, it says something even more consequential about who we can be in the future. Given how interconnected climate justice is with native communities, I want to share my belief as well that adopting a Billy Frank Jr. Day is a strong move towards supporting native students. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Deepa Sivrajan.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can.
Thank you. My name is Deepa Sivrajan, and I'm the Washington Policy Manager at Climate Solutions, a clean energy nonprofit advocating for policy solutions to the climate crisis. I'm also a former Seattle Public School student from West Seattle, although I graduated quite a while ago. We strongly support this Clean Energy Resolution, which commits the school to stick to going fossil fuel free by 2040. We thank board directors Lisa Rivera Smith and Zach Riedel for bringing this resolution forward and taking strong leadership on curbing greenhouse gas emissions and air pollution for the students, staff, and teachers at Seattle Public Schools. This resolution is timely. Seattle already faces major climate change impacts, including higher annual temperatures, increased smoke from wildfires, declining snowpack, and greater drought risk, and more. We need to take bold action, and Seattle Public Schools has an important role to play in reducing the green, the district's greenhouse gas emissions, which will help the city's goal of carbon neutrality by 2050. Transportation and buildings are the two largest sources of greenhouse gas emissions in Seattle due to the use of gasoline and diesel to power vehicles and the use of natural gas and oil to heat and power buildings. These fossil fuels, as many other folks have mentioned, also increase air pollution, which has a disproportionate impact on communities of color, in part due to the historical impacts of segregation and redlining that have led folks to be pushed to live in places like South Seattle that already have greater exposure to air pollution. The good news is, like Robin Briggs mentioned earlier, research shows that school districts that have lowered their diesel and gas emissions from fossil fuels have seen improvements in student health and overall learning outcomes. By passing this resolution, which would move the district's buildings and vehicles off fossil fuels, the board has the opportunity to protect the health and safety of students, staff, teachers, and more, as well as working to mitigate climate change. And I just want to add as well that, as many other speakers have mentioned, in keeping with a commitment to native justice and indigenous justice, we also support the Billy Frank Jr. Resolution and are happy to see that coming forward today. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Heather Price. Heather Price.
Hello?
We can hear you, Heather. Heather?
Are you there, Heather?
Heather Price.
Hi, I'm Dr. Heather Price, and I'm calling in support of the Clean Energy Resolution and also to support the Billy Frank Jr. Day. So I'm a parent. I'm also a climate scientist and chemistry professor, and I've mentored Nathan Hale High School students in their climate action days the past two years. My PhD is in chemistry, and I focused on air pollution. And my postdoctoral research is in atmospheric chemistry from University of Washington's Program on Climate Change. And I first want to start off by saying that as a scientist and an educator, I don't believe in climate change. I'm a scientist. I understand the science, and I understand the impacts of fossil fueled climate change on what's happening right now in our world and what our children and our communities, particularly those that are most vulnerable, are going to be facing and are already facing, such as the summertime smoke that we're seeing. And also, I want to support Kasha Rogers and what she said about including climate in our schools and not just in the science. I'm a chemistry professor, and I think it's a mistake to leave teaching climate just in the sciences. Climate touches every part of our lives, and it belongs in every subject. It belongs in history and English and all of our courses, drama, arts. And the science of air pollution and climate are clear. And the impacts on our children, and particularly the impacts on communities that live near bus barns who ride the toxic diesel buses, are clear. A recent study from Harvard finds that fossil fuel pollution, this study just came out last week, fossil fuel pollution kills eight million people per year. That's about one in five deaths worldwide. So continuing to burn fossil fuels when we have the technology in hand to transition off and the economic means to assist affected workers is downright immoral. The Seattle Public School Board has an opportunity to take a step in moving away from fossil fuels to cleaner electricity, and I hope that you will take the opportunity to vote for that resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Vanessa Maraki. Vanessa Maraki. You may need to press star six to unmute on the conference call line. Vanessa Maraki. Okay, moving to- Okay, moving to our next speaker. Sabrina Burr. Sabrina Burr.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
My name is Sabrina Burr with Seattle Council PTS. Hello?
You're good, Sabrina. Go ahead.
Okay. I'm Sabrina Burr with Seattle Council PTSA. Seattle Council PTSA District 7 in Southeast Seattle engage as a collective of parent leaders under our Southeast Director O'Hara Menace. We work closely with our School Board Director Brandon Hershey almost weekly since summer of 2020. We are a collective of parents who work closely on the behalf of our constituents. We demand a commitment and action to pursuing meaningful and authentic family engagement from Seattle Public Schools. This afternoon, the Board Superintendent and Small Cabinet received an email from us. You will find some data of our reopening survey still open currently with 452 responses. We ask that you all read this letter for further details, and those requested to join us at our next meeting on February 23rd, join us for final results and authentic engagement. Time and time again, we have seen short-sighted decisions made by the district with a lack of meaning, authentic engagement, and we need this to change. Southeast Seattle is our most diverse district, who is prioritized in the strategic plan. Our students, families, and our community bear the brunt of these effects for many years after. Families feel tired and defeated by the system, and they are used to their voices not making a difference, and that must change. Institutional racism and systemic oppression create a sense of fear and scarcity, especially for Black, Native, and people of color and our immigrant communities. If the global pandemic and the national racial justice awakening has taught us anything, it is that we do not want to go back to the way things were, and the risk of continuing to move forward, to do business as usual, is too great. Now is the time to dismantle white system of things, structure, and the culture to be an organization that does not stop at access and inclusion, but generally seek for racial equity organization led by the voices of our students and families. We demand this imperative transformation for equitable outcomes for all. Southeast Seattle families are ready and willing to support and partner with Seattle Public Schools in meaningful ways. Let us start a new culture of partnerships that centers Black, Native, people of color voices, led by the desires and dreams of our youth and our families. As Brent Jones always says, "We are a Seattle Public Schools family." Let us act and truly be one and look out for our most vulnerable members. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson Jones. Stepping back to Vanessa Maraki, I believe.
Is it possible for me to have my time?
Is this Vanessa?
The phone is going to kick me out.
Is this Vanessa?
Yes.
Go ahead, Ms. Vanessa.
Oh, thank you so much. Greetings, everyone. I'm Vanessa Maraki. I'm a veteran Seattle Public Schools teacher. I currently teach third grade at Emerson Elementary. So, my students are the class of 2030, the deadline year for the changes we need to make to avoid climate change hellscape. And I'm also a parent of two SPS graduates. It's on behalf of my sons and my students that I speak today. I would like to thank Directors Rivera Smith and DeWolfe for bringing forward the Clean Energy Resolution and urge the board to pass it unanimously and implement it without delay. This represents the minimum SPS must do to meet its moral obligation to this moment. This resolution must be just the beginning. We need to back up resolutions with leadership and infrastructure. A fierce commitment to sustainability and climate action must be a litmus test for the new superintendent, and we need to hire a Director of Sustainability for the district. Having this leadership in place will allow SPS to unify, coordinate, and mandate sustainability efforts across departments and district-wide. We need to adopt a sustainability analysis tool, similar to the racial equity analysis tool we use, that is applied to every decision in every department. And we need to place climate and sustainability education at the center of instruction by mandating professional development, providing curricular tools, and including sustainability and climate action as a section in the CSEP. It is irresponsible to keep educating students in ways of thinking and acting that have gotten us to this global emergency. Students need the facts about energy, ecosystems, and engineering, and they also need a fundamental sense of responsibility to the web of life and to regenerative principles. As an anchor institution, SPS has the power to take bold action to protect the soil, water, air, and future for next generations. Nothing is more urgent than this. Let's pass this resolution right away and then take immediate steps to make climate action and sustainability the unifying story of Seattle Public Schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Sean Alice Hubbard. Sean Alice Hubbard.
Hello, my name is Sean Hubbard. My sisters and I were students at Northgate Elementary in the late 50s and 60s. Our mother still lives in our family's home, which shares the same block with the school. I and others recently testified at the hearing to appeal the DNS for the Northgate School Replacement Project. We are requesting an EIS because we know that the impacts will be significant, and we are the ones who will have to live with them. On this project, we neighbors and taxpayers have had scant say in what happens in our own backyard. A late-in-the-game CIPA appeal is not a stellar example of community engagement. Starting with the levy, where did it explain in the voter's pamphlet, "Your neighborhood's school will be demolished, your green space of use taken away, and replaced with a doubled-in-size building, and a whole bunch of unpleasant impacts will come from this"? I wouldn't have voted for that. Only one neighbor from 120th Street participated in the SDAT meetings. Was that neighbor supposed to represent the entire neighborhood? And the Duamish people were not consulted on the Natural Resources Report. This is their land, and an oversight is no excuse. Their voices should be heard. In anticipation of levy dollars, schools hired an architecture firm to design a master plan. An employee from the same firm also chairs the Landmarks Board. Due to a conflict of interest, this chair should have recused himself from arguing the denial of landmark status to Northgate and other levy schools' plan for demolition. Schools is taking away a playfield from the whole community, and it is irreplaceable. As our only accessible green space, it is the village green for diversifying neighborhood. The King County Open Space Equity Cabinet would say that the schools is going in the wrong direction. Please do a full environmental review and consider alternatives on the Northgate project, and please improve the public participation process. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Giselle Jenkins. Giselle Jenkins.
Hello?
We can hear you.
Okay. Hi, I'm Giselle, a sophomore from Ingram High School and a descendant from the Aliyah tribe. I believe SPS needs to make a change, namely to increase representation and celebration of Native Americans within their schools. Having Billy Frank Jr. Day celebrated in my school would bring a great deal in change needed by recognizing and honoring a co-sales hero who did a great deal for the Indigenous community here in Washington. Interns from UNEA created a petition to advocate for SPS to recognize and celebrate Billy Frank Jr. Day officially every March 9th. These are some of the reasons committee members provided for why they signed the petition to pass Billy Frank Jr. Day. I am signing this because Billy Frank Jr.'s courage to fight for treaty rights, environmental revitalization, and conservation, tribal sovereignty, and social justice. We must protect the sacred, and Indigenous people must lead. Representation matters, even more so that Indigenous members of our community, who are so often ignored, erased, and directed. This action is being asked of us as Indigenous youth. It is not enough, but it is the start. We need to do better to listen from those whose lands we occupy. It is important to recognize, pay tribute to, and learn from Indigenous community that has shaped our country, and the PNW in particular. Billy Frank Jr. Day, to me, represents a pioneer who brought family to my dinner table. We should all be grateful for his efforts we depend on today. My hope is we continue to foster his beliefs to our young so they can provide sustenance for the people tomorrow. Billy Frank Jr. is a modern-day hero, and we all need to know his dynamic leadership and activism. I, Giselle Jenkins, urge SPS to listen to the words of the community to support this effort. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Sarah Sense Wilson. Sarah Sense Wilson. Sarah Sense Wilson. You may need to press star six to unmute if you are on the line. Sarah Sense Wilson, if you want to press star six one more time, sometimes it takes multiple tries. Okay, moving to the next speaker. Brooke Stromy. Brooke Stromy. Is that Brooke?
Yes. Sarah is on the line, she can go after me, but I speed my time to Kayla Harstad.
Go ahead, Kayla.
Hello?
Is that Kayla?
Um, yeah, can you hear me?
We can, yes. Go ahead.
Hi, I'm Kayla Harstad. I'm Tredamawin Chipewon and Asena Boyin Sioux. I'm a junior here at Ingram, and I'm here to advocate for Seattle Public Schools to designate March 9th as Billy Frank Jr. Day. I would love for my culture to be celebrated through a person who was seen as inspiration to this day. I want to feel the joy and pride of one of our heroes being celebrated school-wide on an annual basis. I want to be taught about Indigenous resilience and contribution, success, and triumphs. Not only should this day be celebrated by Indigenous students, but other communities as well. The Billy Frank Jr. Day Resolution, which was crafted by UNEA Youth and Internship Leadership, calls for supporting the designation of March 9th as a day of remembrance, celebration, and recognition in honor of life, legacy, and achievements of Billy Frank Jr. in his quality nation. Billy Frank Jr.'s courage and dedication to fight for treaty rights is an inspiration to many across the nation. It is important for more people to know about Billy Frank Jr. and his story. Billy Frank Jr. was a visionary who believed in environmental conservation, protecting the salmon, managing and restoring waterways, and revitalizing ecosystems to promote clean water for healthy sea life. The Salmon Defense Fund provides K-12 BSJ Day curriculum on a variety of relevant themes on treaty rights, tribal sovereignty, social justice, environmentalism, and cultural traditional values in Indigenous worldwide. This valuable curriculum could be utilized each March 9th by teachers and staff. I urge the Seattle Public School Board to support our effort in designating March 9th as Billy Frank Jr. Day. This would be a critical step towards making Indigenous students feel included and comfortable within a space where they are supposed to feel welcomed. It is more important now than ever for Seattle Public Schools to celebrate the first peoples of this land. Thank you.
Thank you. Sarah Sense Wilson, are you on the line now? Sarah Sense Wilson?
Can you hear me?
We can, yes.
Okay, great. UNEA's concerns related to Lichten Springs leadership have exponentially escalated after further additional evidence from school reports. Most expected and anticipated problems have been lifted given the documented record of inappropriate abuse of power and direct harm against Black and Brown student families and communities. Lichten Springs Native-focused K-8 option school has historically supported a significant number of special ed, foster, adopted, unsheltered students of color, and was a magnet school for urban American Indian students. We are in utter dismay. SPS would reward the motive bad actors back into leadership at a Native-focused alternative school. The ongoing reward of incompetent leaders who abuse power and harm Black and Brown students, staff, and communities helps explain why SPS has become a national model of public failure. We have been receiving a steady stream of evidence that this bad actor continues abusive practices at Lichten Springs. There is a significant number of Exodus, valued, experienced, interac educators and staff, and BIPOC students from Lichten Springs. Racist leadership results in bad outcomes to BIPOC students. SPS Board is intent on eliminating option schools. We are seeing a drastic dismantling at the hands of Indigenous public leaders. Our children are sacred, our families matter, and our communities unwilling to step aside while you experiment with your misguided theories and colonial processes. We will move away, and we will take back our public education system.
Thank you.
Thank you. The final speaker on today's public testimony list is Reema Mara. Reema Mara. Reema, if you're on the line, you need to press star six to unmute. And it can take a couple tries. Reema Mara. Again, you need to press star six if you're on the line, Reema. President Hampson, that was the final speaker on today's list.
Okay. Just pause momentarily. And please, Reema comes up as I move into the next part of our agenda. Still not there, Reema? Okay. We now move to the action items on today's agenda. And moving first now to action item number one, Resolution 2020/21-18: Transitioning Seattle Public Schools to 100% Clean and Renewable Energy. This came through Operations Committee on January 14th for consideration. Do I have a motion for this item? Oh, I'm sorry. And just a note, our Vice President, Director Hershey, joined us at 3:46. Go ahead, Director Hershey. Director Hershey, are you there?
Yes, sorry. My computer is pulling up the talking points. I'm getting a little spinning wheel. Can I just do a so-move right now while it is opening?
Oh, well, Director Rivera Smith, can you make the motion?
Of course. I move that the School Board approve Resolution 2020/21-18: Committeeing Seattle Public Schools to Transitioning the District to 100% Clean and Renewable Energy as attached to this Board Action Report.
Second. Second.
This motion has been moved by Director Rivera Smith and seconded by Director DeWolfe. And now, we will go to Directors with any comments or questions, starting first with the Chair of the Operations Committee and one of the co-sponsors of this resolution, Director DeWolfe.
Thank you so much, President Hampson. Thank you, Director Rivera Smith, for moving this motion. I just, I don't want to spend too much time. I know we've certainly spoken about this resolution over the past couple of months in several committees and also here at the full Board. I'll be really transparent during our public comment portion today. I was getting pretty choked up. I was crying. I think it really just speaks to the fact that this was such an incredibly humbling and beautiful community effort. And I just want to just raise my hands up to the number of students we have, the community members, environmental folks, families, educators, and especially to Ruth Sawyer from Sierra Club and Lisa Boyos from Climate Parents. This is a huge day for their work. It's the culmination of many months of working together in collaboration. And I just want to give special thanks to Director Rivera Smith. As soon as she got on the Board, we got to work on ideas, probably in December 2019, January 2020, before everything happened with the pandemic and the shutdown. So, we've certainly been thinking about this for a long time. And I want to just give a special note to our students. Back in, this is an old story for Board Directors, but I know we have some... Back in, this is an old story for board directors, but I know we have some new folks here today, which is to say that back in June 2019, I was able to be a part of the Garfield High School graduation ceremony and the valedictorians there, there were 18 of them, gave a shared speech. And in that shared speech, they implored all of the adults who were listening to look in the mirror at themselves, to recognize that they have not done enough to avert or address the climate crisis that is literally at our doorstep and holding all the adults responsible for the future we are graduating them into. Those students made a huge imprint and an impact on me. Their voice, their passion, their concern, their urgency, their stress, their fears have been imprinted on my heart and have been working on this resolution with them in mind. And so I say to all of our students, thank you for holding us adults accountable. I hope you see the power that you have when you come together to build something really wonderful that not only will be beneficial today, but for generations to come. I think after today, we'll be able to celebrate what we've done here, but we have a lot of work ahead of us. So, I think that even though this felt like a lot of work, it is likely the easiest part of this journey. And so I ask all of the folks that are listening who worked on this to not only hold the district accountable, make sure that we are working on this implementation plan efficiently and urgently, and to continue to engage with the district to make sure that this is a really strong commitment and we adhere to it. Because we owe it to our young people, our students, and our own futures, the future of this planet. And so I'll turn it over to other directors with any questions you have for Director Vera Smith and myself or any other staff who helped work on this. But it's a real special day and I'm so proud to be a part of the Seattle School District School Board.
Thank you, Director DeWolff. And I'll just note for those listening that I did inadvertently skip the committee reports on the agenda and we will go back to that after this action item. So, with that, I'm going to go to Director Hershey for questions, comments.
Yeah, so I have had the opportunity to, oh, let me hit my camera. I've had the opportunity to speak with Director DeWolff about this at several intersections. I'm just really thankful for the work that's gone into it, I don't have any questions or comments. Well, I guess I do have one comment, I would just say that as we move forward with this potentially tonight, I just echo the amount of accountability that it is going to take of our system to continue to push, right? Because this cannot only be a movement that is taken by the board. So, we are going to need students especially, but families, community, fellow government, fellow government folks to be in this hand in hand with us and to not only encourage, but also continue to hold us accountable to this aim. Because if we don't, then we are really setting up future generations for a planet that is just ultimately going to be uninhabitable. So, thank you for all the work that's gone into it and I'm excited to vote in favor of this measure.
Thank you, Director Hershey, and now moving to Director Harris. Has Director Harris joined us? So we'll go next to Director Vera Smith, do you want to, I know you're a co-sponsor, but please go ahead with your comments or...
Hi, yeah, no, I definitely support it all the way. It's been an exciting process to work with community to make this resolution happen and bring it to here, bring it to the board for action tonight. You know, the community who spoke tonight couldn't have said it better. I really appreciate everyone who's came out to support it and show that this is a commitment that we're all excited to be making and to lead the way. As we heard, as somebody kind of shared, even Seattle Colleges is looking to do a resolution similar to this to join other school districts such as Oakland Unified School District, Los Angeles Unified School District and Salt Lake City. So, we're joining a good crowd and we're making this happen tonight, hopefully. I really appreciate Director DeWolff's leadership in this and Sawyer from the Sierra Club, Lisa Oillos from Climate Parents and all the staff, students, community members, all taking part in this. And it's been remarkable and thank you all for your support.
And that takes us to Director Rankin.
Hi, I will just say huge thank you to my colleagues for bringing this forward and bringing so many community members into this process. It's really an exciting showing that, you know, we as board directors are here to represent the community. And so it's always really exciting to see when it kind of, you know, comes forward the way that it should in collaboration and in partnership with community members. I think, you know, a lot of our testimony speakers said it best why this is so important. So I won't belabor my enthusiastic support too much. I just want to add, in particular, I appreciated the comment by a student about curriculum related to this. This is a really exciting opportunity, you know, to make sure that even though operationally transitioning to clean and renewable energy is a huge benefit to our students, the, you know, the meaning and impact that it has for them in their lives and as future adults and as current students is, we have exciting potential to connect, you know, students to their physical place and also their physical building. I think any opportunity we have to sort of show our students how things work in their building. I mean, the thermal energy that's happening in some buildings is really exciting and I hope that students that are at those schools understand how that works and why it's exciting and why it's important. And kind of any way we can make that more transparent and accessible to students in addition to the greater community is really exciting. So, just huge thanks and this is definitely the right thing to do at this point in time and going forward.
Thank you, Director Rankin. Okay, unless Director Harris has since joined us, that comes to me for comments and questions. And as I stated in our prior meeting when this came through for intro, I really appreciate the opportunity as a director to connect directly with community that were engaged in working with directors to put this together. It was a very productive and engaged conversation and in particular appreciate the aspects that we talked about that were priorities for me as it pertains to this relative to procurement and the concept of place-based learning and the role that that plays and extending the notion of this, getting to this more conscientious place beyond just what we do within Seattle Public Schools, but to those that we interact with. And that really does get us to the mindset that we need to have when it comes to how we utilize the resources around us to sustain ourselves. So, hands up to all of you, as they say in Coast Salish country, for this very, very good work. Pinagigi from, in Maheo Chong language. And then I do have one question and then also need to, I know Director DeWolff has a couple of additional people I know he wants to add to the bar so that they're memorialized in this work. And then my one question is, it's a question that is probably most likely answered in the context of the task force, but I hope that you'll hear it and consider it going forward. And that is that the way that the fiscal analysis reads, it has a lot of really big numbers relative to the transition, the actual cost of transitioning to a different way of utilizing energy. And what I would encourage you to do is to look at that going forward for the task force to make sure that those things are always brought back to the board in terms of any additional cost, also couched within the prospective long-term savings, right? So that is the full equation of not just the dollars that it takes to do a given project, but if we have to replace, you know, let's say a school bus, that we don't own the school buses anyway, that if you're replacing it with a more eco-friendly version, an electric version, that maybe you're paying additional for that electric option, but it's not the full cost, right? And then even, and then how long does it take to recoup that additional cost? And so that's what I think is going to be really important when this comes back over time, that it's able, that is provided in those kinds of financial terms. I think that's going to really help the success of this. And so I don't know if you wanted to respond to that at all, Director DeWolff or anybody else here from community or Director Vera Smith. If not, that's fine, I would just ask that you have that strong note for the task force and then would ask you to go ahead and make your comments about who else you want to memorialize.
Thank you, Director Hampson, I think that's really great. And certainly I will work with, I would imagine that the Operations Committee will support that process, whether just advising or anyway, so I will certainly take that feedback. So thank you for elevating that. I wanted to address a couple of things that came up from students and a couple of speakers around curriculum. About a year ago, I actually asked the question around what are we teaching around the climate crisis in our schools? And was assured at that time, at the time by Chief Tabaker, that we do teach about the climate crisis in our science curriculum right now, so it's not across the board, you know, all of our different subjects, but I understand that particularly in the new science that we approved recently over the course of last few years, I can't remember the year, I think it was 2019. So just to share that curriculum is inclusive of that topic as well as we just approved new course catalog in January that includes Global Warming Course A and B. So just want to that we are thinking about this issue and have this course elsewhere. And then I also just wanted to share that maybe Greg or Ellie for adding the additional folks, the Faith Action Climate Team, the Protectors of the Salish Sea, the King County Executive Dow Constantine, Fridays for Future Seattle and North Seattle College Student Leadership. Is there something I need to do, offer an amendment, or can I, how do I add those names before we move to the vote momentarily?
Ellie, do you want to take that? If these are being added to the version that was posted, it seems that just an amendment listing them and indicating where they go would be in order for the version that's passed in this meeting. Do you agree with that?
Director DeWolff, are these additions to the board action report?
Yes.
So just when...
Correct, they are just new folks that have...
So one note for you is that we don't, at the end of an amendment, sort of engross the changes in the board action report. So, you could offer it as amendment to the board action report and then the record of that board action report will be the minutes plus what was posted. You could also, if you want to, you know, recognize the contributions of those organizations, also just ask that your comments be included in the minutes, so either way.
I guess that wasn't clear if it was going in the resolution or the board action report.
It's just the bar, just...
Oh, okay, all right, no, then what Ellie said, sorry.
Okay, so I would just, can I offer an amendment to add these five names to the bar? Is that, okay, President Hampson?
Yep, go ahead.
Okay, I move to add Faith Action Climate Team, Protectors of the Salish Sea, King County Executive Dow Constantine, Fridays for Future Seattle and North Seattle College Student Leadership to the board action report under the Community Engagement Section specifically, along with the other organizations and individuals listed who endorsed this resolution.
Can I get a second for that amendment?
Second.
Okay, this amendment was moved by Director DeWolff and seconded by Director Vera Smith. I believe you have the text in written form, Director Wilson Jones.
I do, yes.
Okay. And let's see, can I do all this in favor or do we need a roll call on the amendment?
I can call the roll on that for you.
Okay, thank you.
Director DeWolff?
Aye.
And then I do not believe we have Director Harris with us yet, so Director Hershey?
Aye.
Director Rankin?
Aye.
Director Rivera Smith?
Aye.
And Director Hampson?
Aye.
Amendment has passed unanimously. And so just a reminder, you will at the end of the process need a new motion to move the underlying item as amended.
Yes, and I believe we are ready for that. So Director Hershey, would you mind moving the motion as amended?
Yeah. Again, so like I've got the original motion here, can I just say as amended? Because I'm not sure what the names are, okay. So, I move that the Seattle School Board approved Resolution 2020/21-18, committing Seattle Public Schools to transitioning the district to 100% clean renewable energy as attached to this board action report as amended.
Second.
Okay, this amended motion has been made by Director Hershey and seconded by Director Vera Smith. Ms. Wilson, please call the roll.
Director DeWolff?
Proudly, yes.
Director, we do not have Director Harris, Director Hershey?
Yes.
Director Rankin?
Absolutely, yes.
Director Rivera Smith?
Yes.
Director Hampson?
Aye.
This motion has passed unanimously.
Good work, congratulations. Okay, and so now I'm going to move us back to our committee reports. Thank you, Ms. Wilson Jones, and we'll go next to, we already heard from Operations, so we'll go next to Curriculum and Instruction. Student Supports Curriculum and Instruction, Director Rankin, Committee Chair.
Thank you. So we had our February committee meeting on the second of this month and I'm just gonna kind of go through and kind of hit the high points. We are continuing to get updates and opportunities to give feedback on the Student Rights and Responsibilities Handbook for next year. And again, I want to express my appreciation to staff for continuing to bring that to committee earlier than has been done in the past and more frequently. It's really great. And just a reminder to my fellow directors, and I'm happy to forward you the materials again, that, you know, we'll be voting on this eventually, so now's the time to look over it and see if there's anything that you want to talk about. We also, in the consent agenda, just approved the Highly Capable Plan for the current year and that is a requirement by the state to be funded. So the state requires or considers highly capable services, basic education, and so we have to submit the outline of how those services are being provided to the state every year. It's not a plan for the future, it's sort of a current and backwards look a little bit. But the reason I bring that up is because I just wanted to especially thank and recognize staff for, in the update that they gave us, talking about work being done to identify better ways, more equitable ways to identify highly capable students and also make a special note that, of appreciation for staff connecting with families who are currently being served in the cohort as changes to the program are being made to make it more accessible to more students in more places. And so I just appreciate that check-in with families who are currently in because my hope is that we can all work together in support of making sure that these services are not taken away from students, but are being made more accessible to more students to advanced and highly capable learning. We are in the process right now of looking through, or the district is in the process right now of selecting screeners, dyslexia screeners that have been approved by the state or by OSPI. So that is exciting to see that moving along. What else? Great to be making more progress on... Great to be making more progress on ethnic studies and hiring staff. And I look forward to having the opportunity to talk more about that publicly in a work session in March. So be on the lookout for that. And let's see, oh. Yeah, no, I think that's it for now. Thanks.
OK, thank you, Director Rankin. And we'll move now to Audit and Finance Committee Chair, Director Hersi.
Thank you very much. So our last meeting was mostly focused around our budgetary constraints, especially in regard. Oh, I keep forgetting my camera. Sorry about that. Hi, everyone. So our last meeting was mostly focused around the budgetary restraints that we have in regard to not only transportation, but the various other factors that are impacting the financial health of our district. What I would say is this is an ever evolving situation. There are a couple of specific bills that are moving through the legislature right now that would help us get to a place to where we could reasonably move forward with opening physical buildings, not necessarily reopening schools, because we have been doing school ever since we closed last March. So I would just like to say that as we continue to move forward, please be on the lookout for Bills 5128 and 5344. The first one is for transportation and the other one is for various funding and in terms of ESER specifically. What I would say is, please, if you are interested in returning to physical buildings for potentially this year, maybe even in the fall, please reach out to your legislators and make sure that you are advocating for the support of those two bills. Again, that bill is 5128 and 5344. We would greatly appreciate it. I look forward to the opportunity to chat with you all at the next Audit and Finance Committee meeting. And I will pass it on to the next director. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Hersi. And I will now move to the Executive Committee Meeting. The most recent of one was this morning, February 10. Next one will be on March 17. And pretty exciting morning this morning in that we discussed, thank you, Directors Hersi and DeWolf, the prospect of bringing students onto our school board, not as as voting members, as state law doesn't allow for that, but as full participatory members of the board. And so I'm excited to see us continue to move that forward. And had some some very good, robust conversation and fantastic presentations from students themselves who have very much been a part of driving this this process and brought it forward first. And then we looked again at our updates, ongoing updates to our website as we we try to look to a new content management system. Discussed our upcoming March Board Retreat, which is critical for those that want to listen into that. That's on on March 6. And that will be starting at 8:30 a.m. And will be heavily focused on our in-person learning design for primarily for for fall. And talked about conference schedules, conference opportunities relative to our board goals. And encourage directors to respond when you receive the emails about opportunities to participate, not just in conferences, but in opportunities to learn around best practices. And always happy to hear from folks in community if you know of opportunities. I different states definitely provide opportunities for growth and leadership development for school board directors in very different ways from state to state. And I it's they can be a bit hard to find here within Washington State. And so I hope that folks will will do what they can to take advantage of those opportunities. There are more of them now because they're remote, and so we're able to actually access them without traveling. So there'll be an email coming out about that. And then the District for Point School Director Board Director Appointment Process. We were scheduled to have a meeting on the 25th to narrow that down to five. But we had a our sixth candidate dropped out. So we are now down to five directors, five applicants for the District Four position. And we will be moving forward with that process. And I believe while their resumes and their responses to some initial questions are available now, there will also be videos that will be posted soon. And I think we're hoping by the end of this week, Ms. Wilson Jones will correct me if I'm wrong. And we're looking forward to that will all be done by the March 24 meeting is when we will have that that final decision. And there will be a forum before that. I believe led primarily by the NAACP Youth Coalition will be moderating that forum for us. And then we talked about bringing folks in. Once that's done, board member orientation and kind of the direction that we need to go for that to make sure that board members are as prepared as possible when they come on to the job. So with that, I will then move us on to the next action item. Sorry again for being a bit out of order. And that next action item is BECS V, Approval of Budget Transfer and Construction Change Order Number Five for the West Seattle High School Replacement Project. May I have a motion? This came through operations on February 4 for approval. May I have a motion for this item?
Absolutely. I move that the school board approve the transfer in the amount of $1,900,000 from the BECS V Program contingency to the West Seattle High School Roof Replacement Project budget and authorize the superintendent to approve Construction Change Order Number Five with Wayne's Roofing Incorporated in the amount of $1,500,000 plus Washington State sales tax, with any minor additions, deletions and modifications deemed necessary by the superintendent, and to take any necessary actions to implement both the Fund Transfer and Construction Change Order. Immediate action is in the best interest of the district.
Second.
This motion, this item has been moved by Director Hersi and seconded by Director Rivera Smith. This item is on the agenda for introduction and action today. Chief Operations Officer Fred Podesta, I believe you will be briefing us.
Yes, thank you, President Hampson. And I appreciate quick consideration on the part of the board of this action. Superintendent Juno mentioned power outages in her remarks at the beginning of the meeting and our efforts to refine our practices. And the reason we had recent experience is in the evening of January 12th and the early morning hours of January 13th, there was a severe windstorm went through the Seattle area with wind gusts of 50 to 70 miles per hour. And at West Seattle High School, a portion of our steel roof over the gymnasium locker rooms tore off the building. And following that, we did a an inspection of the roof, the steel seam roof over the gymnasium and found that many of the panels were not properly fastened to the building and that we are at risk at during another storm or big weather event of more damage, which really can create safety impacts for occupants or people near the building, not to mention the other damage it can do to our facility. So none of that, of course, is good news, but there if there's any luck to be had here. We are doing a major roofing project at West Seattle High School, repairing parts of the historic clay roof and other sections of steel roof. This particular section had been installed in 2001 and was not part of this project. But the silver lining, if you will, in here is that we have a excellent roofing contractor onsite working on the roof and who is familiar with our buildings and can help us with this emergency repair. And we have a project in place that will allow us to deploy resources, which will be efficient since the project has started up. And we have also purchased these services through a purchasing cooperative, which really allows us to understand the costs at a kind of a unit cost level. So while this is not a positive event overall, I think we're, you know, fortunate that we're postured to attend to it right away, to attend to the risk, to not have to stand up an emergency project and that we can use program and project contingency budgets to facilitate these repairs. And that's why we've asked for this to be introduced and acted upon in this meeting so we can strike while the iron is hot, as it were. And I think that is kind of the general background. I'd be happy to entertain questions. I'm also joined by Capital Projects and Planning Director Richard Bass, who can give provide any technical details, given that we're not giving the board much time to think about this. I asked Richard to join us in case you have any questions about the project itself. So thank you.
OK, we'll go first to Committee Chair, Director DeWolf. Director DeWolf.
Thank you, President Hampson. Yep, thank you, President Hampson. I don't have any questions. I appreciate the background of Chief Podesta. We talked about this extensively in our operations committee meeting on Thursday. So I think this is a just a smart thing. We need to do it. And that and that actually seems kind of like kismet that that there was somebody already there working on it. And so we can just pull this into the work. So excited to support this and and we'll let the next director go.
Director Hersi.
No question for me.
Director Harris, I believe you joined us at 5:07 approximately.
Well, I thought it was 5 o'clock. Any event, no questions for me on this issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Rivera Smith.
No, no questions. Thank you. I appreciate that we can do this expediently. And thank you, Fred and Richard, for your patience tonight.
Director Rankin.
I do not have any further questions. Had a good discussion in committee. And I am glad that even though this is a bit of a hiccup, that we discovered it in a in a that that nothing horrible, horrible happened, that we discovered that this needed to be secured and and can take care of it. So it's good.
And then I think my only question was just in terms of because this happened in in the way that it did. And that there was because of the historic nature that there you had to use the purchasing cooperative as the alternative procurement method. Was there any other? Anything in particular within that that were we had to have any exceptions relative to our normal procedure, other than the historic piece of it?
I think it was convenient for us to manage the details of construction methods and to on the portion of the project that related to the clay tile roof. I I think other than that, those are convenient for us in managing kind of on a time and materials basis and understanding details. Richard, if you have anything you'd like to add about our our procurement method, I think it's also for this particular situation with the change order, it is very helpful to us that we can only pay for the portions that we need to take care of now and kind of again, pay a little bit more on a time and materials basis, not do a design and a bid and take the kind of total project approach to dealing with an emergency where we'll discover kind of on the as the course of work proceeds, what the true cost will be. I think it will help us manage costs well. And anything you'd like to add, Richard, I'd appreciate.
Yeah, no, I think, Fred, you've actually given a very good explanation of what we what the actions we're taking. President Hampson, we are coordinating with the City of Seattle's Department of Neighborhoods and Landmark Preservation Board. Any activity that occurs within 200 feet on our site within the landmarked areas, we do have to coordinate with them. So we've informed their administrator of this work that we're taking and the actions that we're doing. And our architectural firm is doing that on behalf of Seattle Public Schools. I will note, I am thankful we have a purchasing cooperative that we utilize that procurement method because it does have line item pricing and we're able to go to those line items. And this is literally almost per dollar the same as the standing seam metal roof that we did replace as part of the Phase Two work. This was the only portion of the roof, the this this roof that we're talking about in this change order was the only portion of the roof that was not addressed in either Phase One or Phase Two, thinking that it had significant life left in it. And so I think Fred's done a great job of describing the problem and the solution.
Great, thank you. OK, there's no further comments or questions. Can we have the roll call, please?
Director Rivera Smith.
Aye.
Director DeWolf.
Aye.
Director Harris.
Aye.
Director Hersi.
Aye.
Director Rankin.
Aye.
Director Hampson.
Aye.
This motion has passed unanimously.
Thank you. OK, we will now move to our introduction items. And introduction item number one is the hiring of Dr. Brent C. Jones as interim superintendent and approval of interim superintendent's employment agreement. And as the sponsor of this, I will make a brief statement. So at our last board meeting, the the board voted to authorize me as board president to negotiate a contract with Dr. Brent Jones to serve as interim superintendent. And following that authorization and with the assistance of our district legal counsel, John Serquey, a contract was successfully negotiated with Dr. Jones, which is presented to you today for intro. We used introduction, we used Superintendent Juno's contract as a starting point and then negotiated a number of changes which were reviewed and approved by the district's lawyers and also by Dr. Jones's lawyer. That contract is attached to the bar here as a product of these negotiations. We also referenced prior interim contracts in in previous iterations when we've had such replacements. And Chief Legal Counsel Greg Narvus is also on the line. And and while he can't speak to any legal advice that he and Mr. Serquey offered, he can also answer questions in terms of of the contract. So with that, unless Chief Narvus wants to add something, I will go first to Director Hersi for any questions.
No question for me. Excited to move forward.
Thank you, Director Harris.
No questions for me. I will just restate for the record that I much would have preferred this to be a community engagement piece, and I will not be voting for it. But in the event that there's passes, I will give Dr. Jones my best effort. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Rivera Smith.
Hi, thank you. Think I I had one question. I'm trying to find it right now looking in the bar. There was something added to this that following the interim position, there would be a place Dr. Jones would be given another role in our district. Does that, did I read that right? I'm trying to find it right now, but you can let me.
Do you want me to, how about, let me go to Director Rankin and then we'll come back to you. I do know what part you're talking about, but since I don't have it right in front of me right this moment. We can both pull it up and then come back to that. Are you OK with that?
Sure, thank you.
OK, Director Rankin.
Thanks. I don't have any questions. I just want to highlight for anybody, community members listening, to note that this is introduction and it the materials are attached to the board agenda on the website. So if you have questions or concerns. So if you have questions or concerns um, and um, want us to, to notice or consider anything, please do read that and email, email the board um, as soon as you can because the next time we, we see this item, it will be for action where we will be voting as a board. That's it.
Okay, Director Rivera Smith, did you find, uh, thank you Director Rankin. Director Rivera Smith, did you find what you're talking about? Is it on page one at the end?
Yes, at the end of section A of background information. Um, after June 30th, 2022, the board anticipates that the district will hire and employ Dr. Jones in another yet-to-be-determined executive position. Um, my question about that is, is, is that our purview? Because we're hiring executive positions, be the role of the permanent superintendent who we then hire?
Uh, do you want me to speak to that first, Chief Legal Counsel Narver, or do you want to?
Sure, I, I think you can talk about uh, the, the anticipation there. I, I can address um, why this is in, in the bar as an anticipation rather than, well, actually, why, why don't I go first as long as I'm seizing the microphone?
Okay.
As I understand it, um, Dr. Jones is, is interested in remaining with the district in some capacity and, and Director Hampson's the one who's been speaking with him directly. So she can correct me if I'm wrong, but is interested in, in continuing to serve the district in some capacity, following his term as interim superintendent. Uh, the bar notes that it's anticipated that, that a role could be found for him to stay on. It's not a term of the contract, it's not um, it, it's not, not, not a promise that's being made. It's more uh, the spirit in which this is being entered into, that hopefully this is setting the stage, not just for a one-and-done term, but a, a long-term uh, employment relationship. But it's, but the contract is just for the term as interim superintendent. That's the only thing the board will be asked to vote on in its next meeting.
Yeah, and I would just say that's the, the, in terms of the desire to, for this to be a longstanding relationship, but not a longstanding one in terms of a permanent um, employment as superintendent, but in a lesser role. Um, we do have um, limited authority in terms of what we can require or agree to or commit this board to with respect to that. Um, but so that it, we've provided that the spirit of that is that um, we're entering into this relationship with hopes of it continuing, even if it's in a, um, or in a lesser or not, or you know, one step down role from superintendent.
Thank you for, and for referring that. Um, yeah, I don't really have any other questions. I like Director Harris, um, would have loved to see more communication on this. I understand the timeframe we're in and um, that Dr. Jones is a very qualified candidate. So um, I have no other questions tonight, thank you.
Okay, um, so if there are no other questions, uh, we have now come to the board comment section of the agenda.
Director Hampson?
Oh, I'm sorry, Director DeWolff, and I forgot I put you at the end of the order. Sorry, Director DeWolff, please, any questions?
Uh, no questions, but I did just want to just, um, you know, while I have a moment here, just to say, uh, I think that the um, the concerns raised about this process not including some sort of long-term community engagement are a little, uh, they're missing the mark. The, the reason I think that, that we are doing this, this, this way is because we have listened to community about wanting a thorough and robust, comprehensive community engagement process that includes community, students, educators, families, people from different communities backgrounds and identities, being part of picking our permanent superintendent. So I think um, it feels a little disingenuous to say that this process didn't include that when the point of this is to bring on somebody who we trust, who we know, who is an incredible leader in this community, who can get us through this transition while we find a permanent. So I am excited about Dr. Brent Jones joining us. And I want to just give special shout out to President Hampson. Uh, and for folks listening, um, the role of the president is a very difficult position. And I know that the work that you've put in, the, the long hours, day, night, uh, and every hour between um, to, to really support this district at this time. So I, I understand that you've done a lot of work on this and I really appreciate that because um, like I said before, we are all volunteers. And so the amount of time you're putting in is above and beyond, and I am so grateful to you for that. So that's all I have to say, thanks.
Thank you. And, and, and just as a, since you bring up that note about engagement, it is getting this taken care of and some other obviously critical uh, items related to in-person services for our students that, that we have in front of us. Um, one of the most critical tasks we have is, is then that next bar that needs to come forward to outline what that superintendent, um, that very deeply engaged process for uh, what that superintendent hiring um, will look like. But starting with the, the, the place of um, how, how we will start to engage with community to even define what the process is. Um, so we're really, we're starting that far back in, in terms of that. And I'm, I'm excited about that. I'm excited about um, leaning into um, community and really getting a sense of how do we, how do we get deep, deep into our communities and, and figure out um, how to really develop some relationships that are going to get us to um, our next uh, hopefully longer-term leader. Um, okay, so with that, um, thank you so much, directors. And um, we will um, be back to vote on this on the 24th. And then uh, we will now move to uh, board comments. And so we'll go first uh, with Director Hersi.
Hey, everyone, how's it going?
Oh, I'm sorry, I, I'm Director Hersi, I'm so sorry. Um, we have uh, I, I missed a part. Um, before we move into the general board comments, I will first note that the um, annual Board Director and Senior Staff Ethics Disclosure Forms are completed and are posted for public viewing on the agenda. Um, for those that would like to um, see uh, the ways in which we have other ties to the, the district um, for full disclosure. So apologies, Director Hersi, and please um, go ahead.
No worries at all, it is all good. Um, just quick words of thanks, quite frankly. Thank you to uh, First Senior Staff for all of the amazing work folks at various uh, intersections have been putting in. I know that everyone in our system is just feeling super strapped right now. So we see you, thank you for the work that you've been putting in. But especially thank you for our educators who, in the midst of everything that is going on, um, not only go above and beyond in terms of educating our children, but also have been taking time out of their day to uh, reach out to us as the elected officials that provide oversight for this district to um, share their concerns and their very real fears and anxiety about what it means to return to school. And I just want to say that as an educator myself, uh, I thoroughly, and I know that uh, this goes for the entire board, appreciate that feedback because it gives us better and broader context around what this not only means for you as educators, but also what this means for your students and the families that you work with on a daily basis. So please continue sending that feedback as we work harder and harder to come to an agreement and to, most importantly, deliver on a fair contract that is not only in the interest of our educators, quite frankly, but also in the interest of our students and their families. Uh, these conversations become incredibly difficult when there is so much competing information and it feels as though the target is always moving. And I think that as long as we as a system, and I mean everybody, continue to center students, educators, and safety because those are going to be the folks who are on the ground every single day, continuing to work with our children. And we sitting in spaces where most of us are not spending in or have not spent a ton of time in a K-12 classroom. I, I think that we just need to take a moment and take a breath and make sure that we're seeing each other for all of what we are bringing to whatever space it might be, whether it be the bargaining table or your virtual classroom. And really just take a moment to really authentically try to see one another in all of the anxiety and fear that is, and, and quite frankly, confusion that is happening right now. Um, so again, just thank you to our teachers who are out there killing it, crushing it on a daily basis. I, I know that I speak for the board when I say we appreciate you. Um, special shout out to the District Seven meetings as I do every opportunity that I can. All the folks who continually show up to those meetings and provide their input. Um, I just cannot thank you enough. I think that as, as we push forward to whatever reopening these physical buildings, not reopening school because schools have been open for a long time, but reopening these physical buildings, that group specifically has been doing some really incredible work since before we even began school um, this year. So again, just a huge shout out to the folks who have been joining us uh, on those weekly calls and just, I look forward to continuing to work with you hand in hand to figure out how do we provide um, as many services and opportunities as possible for our students, especially those furthest away from educational justice and especially our black students. Uh, for those of you who are at home listening and who are incredibly frustrated with the um, lack of progress toward uh, getting your student back to some sense of normalcy. Um, I, I totally understand and I feel you, I hear where you are coming from. At the same time, we've got to make sure that we get this right because if we do not provide a fair contract, if we do not uh, move into the direction of reopening these physical buildings, it, together and with a very clear and honest plan to do so effectively, then we run the risk of being in a position to where we potentially have to close again. We run the risk of doing more harm and causing more disruption to an already chaotic time. So I think everyone on this call would agree that we are excited and we are raring to get our students back to a place to where they can continue to form and build on those relationships that they have with their educators and their friends. Um, but the primary, the primary objective here is to protect life, to make sure that we are not causing more harm by sending folks back to buildings without making sure that we can deliver on mitigating as much risk as possible and providing a fair contract for our educators. So again, thank you for all of the feedback that folks have been sending. Continue to send it. As I said before, that is what we utilize in all of our decision-making. So as we move forward, again, we just appreciate that you have chosen um, to entrust us with your children and we are working tirelessly to figure out a way to make good on that trust and provide a system that is going to be one that is safe, one that is welcoming, and one that we can all, educators, students, families, you name it, be excited to return to at some point. So I'll end it there, thank you for the time and I hope everyone is doing well.
Thank you, Director Hersi, Director Harris?
Thank you, President Hampson, appreciate it. I would echo and emphasize what my colleague, Director Hersi, had to say. And I will add to that, folks that want to go back to school, if you could, let your legislators, State Superintendent Chris Reichdahl, Governor Jay Inslee, know that you would very, very much like to see a new category of vaccines and starting with our educators that are assisting students accessing special education services. Um, it, it's very ironic that um, folks are telling us to go back to school, but at the same time, not necessarily recognizing the fear and the anxiety of our teachers and folks that are living in multi-generational households, uh, to give them a boost up in terms of getting those vaccines. Now, I will appreciate that we have a vaccine shortage. I will appreciate that uh, it's not as well organized as we all would like to see, but our parents and families can absolutely help the district and the teachers by lobbying for same. Um, additionally, there's been a great deal of traffic and conversation about the potential of cuts of transportation to option schools. And Director Rivetta Smith and myself will be holding a Zoom meeting at 3 o'clock on uh, Saturday at 3:00. And that'll be uploaded to both of our board pages. We've invited principals of the option schools to attend. I believe uh, Chief Burgie will be invited to attend as well to talk about the finances and issues of this. And with any luck at all, we can communicate even more clearly. Um, to those folks that are working so hard, I give my deepest thanks. These are not easy times. I do in any way, shape, or form discount the stress and anxiety that families are feeling. But I also know that good people are working very, very hard. And when you send your questions and your comments to the board, if you could provide constructive uh, input, much appreciate. Creative ideas, we're open to them. Just look at things like outdoor education, et cetera, that have come forth and rightly so. And if you could tell us which school and what grades your students are, that also helps us shift, sift, excuse me, S-I-F-T, not S-H-I-F-T, sift the information and triangulate it to get a better sense of, of where information is coming from. Um, again, it's an honor and a privilege to serve and to serve with such great people. Thank you.
Director Rivera Smith?
I'm sorry, can you come back to me? Sorry about that.
Director Rankin?
Uh, yeah, hi. Um, I, I will just start by um, thanking everyone who, who came in and gave uh, public testimony. And I especially want to thank our student speaker. The student speakers are always um, some of my favorite parts of board meetings. And um, so thank you, Kira, for talking about um, skill center and the opportunities that it provides. Um, hands-on learning is, is, is huge and is even, you know, more limited in a remote setting than um, than it would be normally. But getting more hands-on learning, more opportunities for, for students to make uh, physical connections with their education and um, learn skills and participate in things that feel very, very relevant is something um, that I am really excited about um, in general. And so I want to just thank you for highlighting that for us. Um, in terms of transportation, um, I, I don't know what we can um, how we can communicate out more broadly. You know, the board doesn't have its own communication channels, um, other than our, our Facebook pages and comments right now. Um, but I, I really, you know, I've been looking over a lot of data um, about ridership and um, and in terms of budget and in terms of uh, especially uh, in relation to the Clean Energy uh, resolution that we just passed. Um, you know, we, the, the overall system of transportation in Seattle Public Schools, how we make those routes and such has, has uh, really not been looked at for a while. And so we do have a work set, in addition to the um, community meeting that Director Harris mentioned. Um, Director Hampson and I had a, um, thanks to uh, Seattle Council, PTSA, hosted a um, uh, listening and, and community session for families of color in option schools about transportation um, a couple of weeks ago. Uh, there is also going to be a work session coming up on the 23rd, I think, to discuss transportation um, in relationship to budget considerations. And um, related to that, the, as, as Director Harris alluded to, the budget situation is real and it is, is big and it is heavy. And um, option school transportation and transportation more broadly is being looked at because we are in a, a really tight spot with, with finances. a really tight spot with, with finances. You know, there's always, everybody always is, there's always budget cuts, budget something, but it's, it's actually pretty dire. We have received word from the state estimating some funds coming to us for recovery from COVID, but we, we don't know if the state will hold us harmless for transportation shortfall, for a loss of enrollment, for various other things. Basically, our expenditures as a district are, are costs exceed the resources that are given to us by the state. And we've got to find ways to make it up. So as a board, it's our, as people like to say, it's our fiduciary duty and it is in fact state law to pass a balanced budget every year. We cannot, you know, we can't spend money we don't have. It's illegal. So while we have to make cuts that seem like, you know, you know, why are we pitting this against the other or why are you, you know, doing this and not this? Everything in a budget, in the budget is a choice and for anything we, any changes that we have to make to add services, we have to make a decision about what will lose funding. That's just, that's the unfortunate reality. And so as community members, I would ask to please, you know, continue to advocate, get loud with the state. We need new progressive revenue. We need to be able to have relief funds from the federal government for recovery from COVID. We need those funds to come directly to us as a district to be able to spend on those recovery efforts as opposed to backfilling transportation shortfalls and other operational costs. We, we really need to be able to do, to have access to that funding so that we don't have to keep cutting services to students and, and potentially staff. So, which is of course also in service to students. So can't put too fine a point on it. We, we need, we need support. I, let's see. Oh, yeah, to the point of engagement around the superintendent search, we have in, you know, the situation with COVID is the, you know, the cloud that hangs over all of the other decisions and considerations that have to be made all the time in a district. And I, I, it's funny, we've been told that we're being, you know, too slow to hire a permanent superintendent and too fast to hire an interim. And that's kind of a funny complaint, because the whole point of being swift with an interim was so that we could keep operations and maintain, you know, forward progress in support of our students over the next, into next school, or over the course of next school year and have time to do that deeper engagement and get community input and have a community-led process for finding a superintendent. So the urgency and not urgency, those are related and actually makes, make a lot of sense to me. Outdoor learning, I'm, we were excited to see some photos of some sites that have started. Really, really exciting to see kids together learning outside. Just a reminder that that is an option, that's a rolling process that's open to any teacher building at any time. And central office staff in charge of that initiative have been really supportive and great at figuring out the process to move things through from proposal to action. And there's, there's support there to, you know, help, help figure out feasibility and whatnot. So, so keep the applications, keep the submissions coming. Lastly, I'll say with regard to concerns about the Northgate site, as a member of the Operations Committee, I asked some staff and as the representative for the area where Northgate Elementary is, I asked for a meeting with staff to better understand some of the issues that have been brought up by community. And so that will be happening, I think, over break. And then finally, I am going to look at after the midwinter break, setting up, I'm tired of Zoom and Teams, so I'm going to look at setting up some community meetings, maybe at lunch, near lunch sites in my district. Just as an opportunity for people to come by, pick up lunch, let me know what you're thinking, let me know what's going on in District One. And so I will be posting those, picking some dates and making sure that the board office gets them so that they are on the website. And I think that's all. Wash your hands, wear your mask.
Thank you. Director DeWolf?
Thank you, President Hampson. I don't have much to say other than what I've been able to say tonight about our climate resolution. So I'll just double down on my gratitude to Director Rivera Smith, the folks from the organizations and individuals who endorsed it, and especially the students, the educators and the families and the community members who helped that effort. I just wanted to share too, I think Director Hersi mentioned last night, I was able to have a community meeting with the Thurgood Marshall families and so I want to thank the families and the young folks who joined our meeting last night. It was a really, really wonderful opportunity to connect with one of the school communities in my district. And I know that obviously Director Hersi has some of the folks based on the tenancy in his district as well. So it was just a really great conversation. And just to, just to affirm that we, we do hear you, whether it's by email or community meetings, and we hold everything you say close to our hearts and understand the, the difficulty that everyone faces trying to experience and go to and participate in school during this pandemic. And so we're there with you on, on really wanting this to be over and we want to do it right and want to make sure everybody's safe. And so we'll continue to, you know, obviously with the aim of coming back someday. And we'll work towards that. But outside of that, I just wanted to update one thing from our Operations Committee meeting, which I think is a little bit, little bit lost, maybe buried the lead. But James Baldwin was an LGBTQ, Black LGBTQ cultural and literary hero. And the fact that one of our elementary schools will be changing their name to James Baldwin Academy is a huge deal. And so thank you to the family support worker there. And the school leader, Ms. Funtelroy, for bringing that forward. I'm really excited to see that through. And with that, I just thank you all for a really great night and back to you, President Hampson.
Thank you all. We are about to get cut off from SPS TV due to a technical difficulty. We have a matter of seconds and as a result, rather than recess us and bring us back, I'm going to forego my own comments, but please look at my, my personal Facebook page that has Thursdays in the Park with Director Hampson, opportunity to meet in person and walk coming up. And so I'll just take a couple extra minutes next meeting and look forward to seeing you all in other formats. So Pita Gigi, be well and we will see you tomorrow.
Oh, I'm sorry, we, I forgot that we had, had to come back to you. So are you willing to forego or do we need to recess and come back?
No, I will forego. Don't worry about it. I appreciate that.
I apologize for that. Yeah.